Call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, May 14th, 2019. This is a Prescott City Council Study Session. Please call roll.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. We have two items today. Water, water, water everywhere. And we do have comment cards if you'd like to fill one out for public comment on items 3A and 3B. So let's start with item 3A, please.
Presentation by Public Works on the Annual Water Withdrawal and Use Report.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Leslie Grazer, Public Works. I was asked for a short presentation because you have a bigger presentation following, so I'll see if I can get through this in like 15 minutes or less. As you're aware, the city files an annual report, March 31st of each year, and a requirement to meet state rules. You have a handout that was generated that shows how much water was pumped, how much was recharged, and then how much was used by customers. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on that.
I do have a question. Can I ask now?
Yes, sir. Great. Yes.
Um, I heard somewhere out on the street, correct me if I'm wrong, because I hope I am, that based upon the water we take off of Watson and Willow Lake, we're only allowed to recharge a certain amount, gallon-wise?
So we have multiple, yes, we have several different things that happen. So we have a surface water right. The surface water right allows for about 4,800 acre-feet for
Okay, that, I'll stop you right there.
Recharge.
Why?
Why?
I mean, I know we can, I know we can charge, recharge, sewer recharge, as much as we want. But when we have a wet year like today, why can we not recharge more than the surface water that they give us the right to recharge? Is that SRP or the state?
That is the state.
And why, why is that? If water is so important, we now are letting it run down the creek instead of recharging it once we hit a certain level. It makes no sense.
Right. So you're actually allowed to take off the 4,800. The city generally doesn't because you have a policy in place that you like to keep water up for recreational purposes. So we have to balance that. We also have to make sure we recover the water supply that we put down on the surface water side through our pumping on an annual basis. So the Public Works Department makes sure that they balance those two.
Well, I understand that. But when we have a wet year like today, and we're recharging, how much did we recharge out of those lakes so far? Over 3,000?
Uh, this year, 1,000, probably about 500 at this point, maybe 600.
Okay. Do you foresee that we might be able to recharge more than four out of the lakes?
If the city chooses to go beyond their conservation pools, it potentially can. You're not losing necessarily because the SRP chain was also spilling this year, too.
But the state won't let us recharge more?
It's your surface water right, so you only have a surface water right to a certain volume. And you made it two years ago, I think it was, at this point, where it was 4,700 and change.
Have we ever challenged that? I'm really aggravated about it because we have wet years, which we don't get that often. We could be recharging that water into the aquifer, and they're not allowing us to recharge more than four off of a rain, or several rain events, and it just makes no sense.
Oh, well, it's part of surface water rights, and so maybe that's something the legal department can bring back to you another time.
Sorry to interrupt your presentation.
No, it's okay. I'm happy to answer if I can, and the, if, when we have those flows, they're expecting them down in their reservoirs as well. So even though we'd like to take everything we can, there is laws that are in place and surface water rules. Okay. Are you gonna be okay?
No.
Okay. Well, then I better just turn to the next page.
I'm, I'm always okay with anything out there that makes sense to me.
As long as everybody's still breathing, yeah.
But if it doesn't make sense to me, then I'm aggravated. And this aggravates me because it doesn't make sense.
Okay. Well, I think the legal department can help you with the surface water rights.
Clyde will help me with it later.
Yes, sir. Your information is broken down into a few charts. So there's a population served versus Prescott pumping, so we've been watching this for many years. You can see that the pumping has gone down while the population is going up in the first chart. The next chart looks at your GPCD. This has been in your policy for many years as well, so we track as far back as we can. These are numbers that are generated from the information we send to the state of Arizona. They look at our population and our consumption, and then gallons per capita per day is prepared. So 2018, we should foresee that in a couple months. This last item is 2017, at 118 gallons per person per day. Your next chart, we're back to surface water a little bit again, and these are the recharged volumes. So the blue line is showing, or the bar is showing the surface water, while the red line is showing the effluent reclaimed supplies. And then the green bar is showing them combined. So you can see how surface waters behave for the city. There's also changes that happen along the way. It was a good point the other day that was brought up by the Public Works Director about the, the channel that is used for surface water supplies used to be open ditch, out to CVID, and then that was piped in the 2012, 13 time period. Oh, okay. Yes, sir.
So on.
Uh-oh. Surface water.
On the average, we're recharging fluent water, we're recharging about 31, 3200 a year without any water coming off the lakes, correct?
Repeat that again?
On an average, looking at your chart, Chart 3, the one that, one that's right there, it looks like we're recharging about 32 on an average. And because of the chart before that showing 118 per capita, what do you attribute that to, the drop over the years since 2002?
Uh, it can be multi-variable. So the, the previous one, the GPCD, why is it dropping?
Yeah.
Um, so in 2006, you had a full-time water conservation coordinator. You enacted a tiered rate structure, and then the market also took over by introducing products that use less water. And those are part of your building code, so that's, those are adopted every year. So that's why that has gone down to some extent, and there's probably other things that attribute to that change, too.
Oh, it's a beautiful thing.
Well, and Leslie, wouldn't you say on that same chart where you see those spikes, like in 17, at 7,300, that's due to surface water? I mean, it was a wetter year, right? So.
Absolutely. So you probably are aware that we have documents that say if SRP is spilling off the Granite Reef Dam, and we're spilling as well, then we can start recharge before April 1st. And that has happened, that happened in 2017, and it's happened this year as well. 18 was a little bit different. Last year, you can see our bar was much lower. 877 acre-feet were moved. So that's the nature of surface water supplies. Sometimes you have more, and sometimes you have less coming in.
And just to bring credibility to these numbers, I know I've been questioned in the public about some of these numbers that you're reporting. Give us some background on where these numbers come from.
And that's a really good point. And usually that's how I start these conversations with our annual report, is that we have, the Public Works staff works 365 days a year collecting data on all water movement. So whether it's pumped, whether it's recharged, whether it's being delivered to a customer, those are the data points. So those get rolled up, you know, as we're tracking them every day, those spreadsheets, and I look at those at the end of the year. And that's how we know what we know.
Furthermore, on population served and city Prescott's pumping, Gary Woodard was here a while back, several weeks ago, and talked about population growth and water usage being decoupled. It looks like this graph kind of depicts that as well, an inverse relationship.
Yep, and they see that across the state. So we have other graphs that we use from the state of Arizona, and they show the same trends. So they're not really surprising. They're just, that's what we've seen over the time. And you would expect that. You would expect that hopefully things would become, people would become more efficient with their supplies, and then that you could, you would have more population that you could serve.
Conservation's working.
Mm-hmm. And your last chart, to keep us on time, this is a, one you've seen every year. We skipped last year having this presentation, partly because we didn't need to have a council approval for the dollar amount that we had to pay to the state. In previous years before your changes in procurement, if it was over $10,000, we needed to bring it to you. So last year, with the changes, we didn't have that. We also probably had a condition where we didn't quite pay 10,000 either, because we had high surface water recharge, which brought our numbers down and our costs down. So this last piece here is the customer type. So you can see the city's predominantly residential, followed by commercial use, and then it breaks out from there. And there's plenty more data and other charts we can generate for you. So if there's something that you didn't see today, we'd be more than happy to pull that data together and provide it next year, because there's a whole back page available at this time. So.
I know, this is great, Leslie. I appreciate you being here today. So one other thing I would ask, ADWR gives us the right to pump out of Little Chino aquifer. How many acre-feet, if you pool, so to speak, all of that water into one bucket, what is that number that ADWR allows us to pump annually?
We're at 24,000 if you include and change, if you include the big Chino. Are you asking with or without the big?
So without the big Chino, just the little?
Just over 16,000.
So over 16,000 square feet, we could, or were allowed by ADWR, and we pumped 6,763 last year. Okay. Other questions, comments from the council? Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you. I'm gonna, number one, I'm gonna compliment Leslie and the staff. You know, when you look at the chart on the far left, and you go back a few years, and you look at the daily consumption per capita, being at 157 gallons, 178 gallons, blah-daddy-blah. And our residents are now, and we, we got more residents, and now we're down to about 118. Well, that comes through a collective effort. It's not just the city council, it's not just the water, it's the residents themselves. So Leslie, this, this is, this is really a good-looking report.
Thank you, sir. Well.
Other questions, comments from the council? Councilman Blair, you okay?
Oh, yeah.
You got it? Okay.
No, I mean, it's good news. I mean, thank you, Leslie. I mean.
It's not me, it's your whole team at the Public Works and across the city. Everybody has to work on these things.
But you're the one standing at the microphone, so thank you for.
Okay. You're welcome.
Thank you for the presentation. I know Craig and all the guys at Public Works, that's what they do, keeping track of it all, and Clyde for his part. Because, you know, we sit up here and we're only good as the information we receive, so hopefully this is good information.
Always is, yep.
Yeah, and you know, Steve, I'll just hone in one more little one. You know, it was, it was the private sector that brought to the awareness of the council and the staff and stuff through organizations like Seawag. What we could do, you know, we had at one time water conservation person on staff, and some of the things we implemented over the last number of years, including rate changes, including water consumption type, oh, I don't know what you call them, subsidies or whatever for things. There's, there's things that have been done on a collective effort by this community to drop this number from 170 gallons, 157 gallons, whatever it is, down to just, just under 120. That's pretty good.
Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right. We'll move on to, thank you, Leslie. We'll move on to item 3B.
Presentation by Herb Dishlip of Herb Dishlip Consulting LLC on the city's water resource management module, model.
Me again. Good afternoon, and Leslie Grazer, Public Works. Again, I'm just gonna read you a quick bio for Herb Dishlip. He's done a lot of work over the years. Herb Dishlip is a registered civil engineer in Arizona who is a registered Arizona expert in water resource planning, water rights, and water regulations and permitting requirements. Over 22 years, from 1981 to 2003, Mr. Dishlip worked in various senior management positions at the Arizona Department of Water Resources from 1985 through 1996. He served as the Deputy Director of Water Management and was primarily responsible for the implementation of the groundwater code programs. From 1996 through 2003, oops, yep, sorry, Herb Dishlip was the Assistant Director of Statewide Planning. In this capacity, Mr. Dishlip was involved in many aspects of water planning and water policy development, from evaluation of regional water demands and supplies, to study of the end use of remediated groundwater, to the issuance of grants for river restoration and habitat enhancement. He has been involved in the Central Arizona Project, CAP, from the planning stage in the 1970s through the more recent modifications to cap water allocations. He was co-chairman of the Governor's Groundwater Management Commission in 2001. In 2003, Mr. Dishlip retired from ADWR and formed Herb Dishlip Consulting. His consulting practice includes work in the fields of water rights, water conservation programs, long-range planning, Colorado River contracts, and interstate relationships. Much of his work used, involves the use of geographic information system databases and development of water supply and demand models. His clients include the Central Arizona Water Conservation District, ADWR, Arizona Public Service, the Arizona Water Banking Authority, and the cities of Prescott, Phoenix, Apache Junction, Flagstaff, and several irrigation districts. So it's almost reintroducing you to Mr. Dishlip. He's worked for the city for many years, and previous long-term planning wasn't stagnant, but you look at a potential scenario and see how it looks for the community, and that's been presented. I think there's at least a couple of you that probably remember from 2006 some of the work. So in 2014, we were looking at what next for the decision and order, looking at what kind of, how our data was housed, and so we asked Mr. Dishlip to join us again in a long-term management planning strategy. It has resulted in the water resource management model. And then we also asked that it could be, have a GIS component, so that we could relay information from that model in a map format, gather things quickly to present either to you or to the public, or to cross-check ourselves. It's amazing how a picture helps you out. And it was also intended so we could have it for day-to-day, tracking what's going on, as well as being ready for the city's next decision and order modification, which we'll be looking at that in the next year or two, based on what's written in our documents. So I'd like to welcome Herb Dishlip today, and thank you for having the time to listen to what's been, being worked on, and it's gonna hopefully carry the city for many, many years. We just need to switch over the electronics real quick.
This worked before we went to lunch, so.
Sure it works now.
We gotta plug something in, right?
It should be changing over. You got your pointer. Yeah, there you go. You got your pointer.
Yeah, there's my pointer.
Okay.
It's nice to be back. It's been quite a few years. Mr. Lamerson and Mr. Blair, we were on the council probably the last time I made a similar type of presentation.
Still here.
And you're still here. For all of you, it's nice to meet you all, who I have never met. So what we want to talk about today is a project that I've been working on with the staff, closely with the staff, to try to come up with really a concept that helps them be able to look at long-range, long-term management planning on their water resources. And it's a project that is unique to Prescott. It's not an off-the-shelf kind of a model work we did. It's very oriented, custom-made to Prescott. Prescott has a unique set of circumstances, a unique regulatory environment it sits in with regard to the active management area, with regard to assured water supply, with regard to what kind of water rights it holds. And so there's a framework built into this model that helps keep things oriented towards some of the parameters that are outside of the control of the, of the city that they have to keep in mind. And the most probably important to that is the Assured Water Supply Regulations of the Department of Water Resources, because that's what keeps track of water supply available for current customers, current demand, and for growth. So with that, we'll turn to the structure, the purpose that the city laid out for looking at a long-term water resources model or management tool. First of all, was to organize databases. The city has lots and lots of data. They collect data, and it's a huge amount of data. Customer information by the month, and in gallons, and goes way back. But that kind of sits, it's almost overwhelming when you have too much data, that you never organize yourself to look at it. And so what part of the model basis is, is to keep that data organized, updated, and be able to quickly look at, are things changing? Or what are the trends over years? And so that's one of the primary purposes. Second was to provide analysis tool to determine those trends, and we'll talk a little about some of the tools that we've developed. Providing a monitoring tool for the Assured Water Supply Designation status, that's pretty important. As Leslie mentioned, she has to file an annual report, and a report is kind of a report card to the Department of Water Resources of, here's what we're doing compared to here's what we're allowed to do. But that also becomes kind of a framework if you're looking at longer term, which is, how does the long-range vision fit with the limitations or the allowances, not just limitations, allowances within assured supply? And finally, we wanted to provide a planning tool to evaluate future demand and supply conditions. And that's kind of the long-range purpose that we're looking at, looking at long-term demand, long-term supply. So the approach we used was to utilize data sets used in the 2013 water and wastewater model prepared by Corolla Associates. That's where we started. The city invested a great amount of time and effort with Corolla to look at its long-range infrastructure needs for water and wastewater. What the concept they came up with was to look at the long-term build-out. How, how much is the ultimate need of the city of Prescott? And, and that framework then was looked at, they were left with, well, we're gonna look at the wells we need, the structure we need, the sewers we need, but they had a harder time with what are the water resources that go with that. And so the focus was to take from there and build on it with a focus on, well, where the water, where's the water gonna come from that goes in these pipelines, and where's the water gonna be generated that goes to the sewer plants? So we really built on the work that Corolla did. Second, we wanted to integrate more recent information and data from the 2015 adopted general plan. So that was kind of new information even since Corolla, which was to look at the big-picture general plan information, especially with regard to land use planning. We wanted to develop a geographic information system database. When geographic, we're talking about maps, geography, where things are in the real world. So everything isn't just a piece of paper with a table. It relates to that house, and it relates to that building, and it relates to that subdivision. And Prescott has a really good geographic information database system. They've got staff, and, and it really made a lot of sense to, to build on the geographic component of it. And I think that's one of the things that we added to this approach that's a little bit unique to Prescott. Most cities don't get into that level of information management to get it into a geographic information database. But I think it, in this case, it really, really helps us visualize where the future demands might come into play. Then we wanted to develop a database system of spreadsheets. Spreadsheets are just models that, like your bank account, how much goes in, how much goes out. But spreadsheets are very powerful analysis tools. You can develop formulas, and you can relate back to your data table, and you can import data, and you can count number of accounts. And so we developed a fairly extensive data analysis system through using the Excel spreadsheet. So it's a, a common software. It's not anything exotic. And finally, and probably most important, we didn't want to just take a snapshot. We didn't want to say, well, here's the future as of today, but three years from now, that's obsolete. We wanted to make sure that any kind of model that was developed, your database organization was gonna be flexible, updatable, and could reflect changing assumptions. So kind of what's important is, well, what are you planning for, for the long term? Where is it? And what is it that you're planning if this is your long-range vision? We developed really two planning areas for extent, and I'll walk you through those. First of all, we call planning area number one. And we start with, okay, what's in the city limits currently? This is the, the city limits and, and any new annexations. We add to that the Chino Valley Irrigation District and Chino Valley Service Area, because we've got two things up there. We've got actual service to customers in Chino Valley outside the city. But we also have a long-range commitment as a result of purchasing the water rights from Chino Valley Irrigation District, that they can ask for water, and we will provide them a certain amount of water if they develop and they want to hook up. To that, we add the Yavapai Prescott Indian Tribe, that's a yellow block in the middle. We have another long-term obligation to serve them through a, a water settlement agreement that the city reached with them. And so part of our future service, even though it's outside of our city, is to deal with the Yavapai Tribe. And finally, we have a legacy, but not necessarily a legacy. You could always choose to expand it, and that's the service to customers outside the city limits, in the county areas. We have served both cus, uh, customers who are in subdivisions and customers who are not in subdivisions. And you put that all together, that comes kind of your base service area plus expansion area for within the city limits. And so you put them all together and put an overlay on it. Here's kind of our planning area. And that's a planning area that is kind of your baseline planning area. This is where we have commitments. We have commitments to serve people, or we have a sense that within our city limits, we'd want to serve people.
Question?
Yes.
Does that take in the unincorporated or the unannexed areas of the ranch land?
No.
Not as the James Ranch?
No, that's not in this, this area, not in anything that's not annexed.
Okay.
But the planning area two, we put in place because the general plan does include that kind of land. And so we created a second planning area based off of the general plan land use area. And you can see that, for, based on that perimeter of the land use area, it includes land that's not in the current city. So we created two kinds of looks to the future. One might be called your maximum or your ultimate build-out, and one of them is your current commitment build-out. And so we've, we've done a two, a dual track. And so you put that as your outside boundary, based exactly on the general plan, and you add to that the parts that weren't in the general plan, that are part of the service area, that part of, of planning area number one. So you're not just planning the general plan area, you're planning your current service area, Chino Valley, plus that area. And you come up with a combined second area, shown in yellow, and you can see it's quite a bit bigger than the current service plan. And that gives you the city ability to do a lot of looking forward to, well, this is what we think is happening, but who knows in the future? We could expand all the way out to the general plan area. And as I mentioned in the earlier slide, adding the information to the general plan area was a big step to add perspective. That general plan land use map, it doesn't just show you a boundary, it shows you areas that are set aside for recreational development that are not developable. And so it helps you, guide you a little bit on, on what might the future be on the, on the ground. The second thing I talked about was analyzing your trends. These graphs are, I think, kind of I cherry-picked them out a little bit of what the, some of the important information is. We looked at a period of record, starting in 2011 through 2018. We looked at all that, hundreds of thousands of data points. And we looked at two important kind of aspects. Well, what's the makeup of the account base? And you can see the first graph, the makeup of the account base is 88% single-family residential. So by far, in a way, not even close, most of the customers live in single-family residences. About 3% live in condos, apartments, multifamily units that are even mobile home parks. And about 9% of the accounts are non-residential. But you look at the next chart over, and on volumes, volumes, the percentages are different. Those 88% of accounts use 55% of the water. And those 3% of the accounts on multifamily use 10% of the water. And the 9% non-residential uses 34% of the water. So every time you think about, well, I'm adding a subdivision of houses, you're probably adding some non-residential use along with it. You're building schools, you're building municipal facilities, you're building parks, you're building the grocery stores. And so this kind of reflects that, that even though you might be reviewing a plat that's single-family houses, there's gonna be associated use if you're gonna have a balanced city. And that's what these reflect, is that you have a balanced city. And that's what these reflect, is that you have a balanced city, especially when it looks at the distribution of the water supply. So here I've plotted the water use that we've looked at for all those records. Out of the 24,000 accounts, we looked at how many of those accounts are single-family residences, and how many of those had a minimum of five years' worth of water use. And we thought, if you didn't have five years' worth of water use, maybe we don't have a good average yet. But if you have at least 60 months of deliveries, houses are pretty well-established, yards are established, people have lived in the houses. And so out of that, 19,000 houses or single-family houses, and you can see that out of those 19,000, everybody isn't using the same amount of water. We talked about average per capita and average uses, but nobody's really average. That's the way averages work. So here's the average. The average was about 0.174 acre-feet per year for a single-family household. But you can see a lot of people use more than that, and a lot of people use less than that. And so you have to keep in mind when you're doing long-range planning that you can look at averages, and that's what this model does a lot, it looks at averages. But any individual might still be using more than the average, and some of your customers are using quite a bit above the average. And that's just to depict that the averages don't just come out of nowhere, they come from looking at data. And the data has quite a bit of variation in terms of distribution and use. Here's another kind of look at that, where we look at subdivisions, because the city is very oriented around subdivisions. You've got lots and lots of subdivisions. And so we plotted the average use for lots within subdivisions. And you see, it's a pretty straight line for most part. There is not a lot of variation per lot across most of the subdivisions. It's pretty flat. But then there's outliers. And what you want to remember when you're looking at any subdivision or anybody, that all subdivisions are not average. But for the vast majority of that trend line, if you look at the long blue line across the bottom, it is pretty flat. And that's pretty interesting that, that's not working.
Mr. Dishon?
Yeah.
So on this data, did you look at the year the subdivisions were built?
We can't. We didn't. This particular data is just gross data.
Yeah.
But you can actually organize it by, we have build-out dates. We have dates for when the subdivision was approved in the model. And we actually have dates for when the house was constructed on the lot. And so you could organize and sort and do a special study if you wanted to look at water use by year of house.
Yeah, that would be interesting. I have a thought about what that conclusion would look like.
Yeah, it's, and I don't know what the answer is, because things surprise you when you look at the data. You think of something, it was going to be this way, turns out not to be that way, so.
Mr. Dishon?
Yes, sir.
You're just plotting data points primarily.
That's what this is, is data points.
I was really looking at analyzing these outliers and asking the question, why?
No, this is really, the model was built for the staff to do that, yeah.
Thanks.
That's really what, the model was built to give them a tool to do that analysis. So we're monitoring this demand and supply. And what we want to do is track things that are going on. We want to track, among other things, who are your existing customers? What about vacant parcels on approved lots? What about vacant parcels within approved preliminary plats? What about prior contracts and agreements, including annexation agreements? We have a commitment to CVID based on the water rights purchase. We have commitments to Yavapai Prescott Tribe. So these are some of the commitments, what the Department of Water Resources calls these committed demand. So in addition to the existing demand that comes out of your annual report, the department wants to know, yeah, but what about the water you've committed to people who haven't moved in yet, so that you don't double count? That's basically. So one of the important aspects of the model is to track commitments so that you don't end up double counting. So here's a graph or a picture using the geographic information system that depicts the existing accounts, the 24,183. And obviously, this is to make it visible over a long area, but it gives you a feel for, there's a high concentration of existing lots, and then there's vacant areas in the city. What we're able to track with this is the accounts in place that have been added yearly since 2011. We can track the account type, so we'll know if it's single-family, multifamily, or non-residential. We can track the amount of water use for each account. So any individual, we have the records in the model that we can look at, well, what are the individual trends? We can track the assessor parcels associated with the accounts. We can track the year of construction. So you can do those kinds of modeling analysis of when things were built. And you can track the number of units of multifamily accounts. You can actually track some other things, but these are the kind of the highlights that I put in here of the kinds of data that might lead you to getting insight. And that's kind of what you're after when you're looking long-range planning, is I look at the numbers, but I don't know what they mean. I need some insight. And by tracking these variables, you can get some insight to what the data's telling you. So the next one was these commitments. And we call these in the modeling, we call them virtual accounts. You could also call them vacant lots, but I like virtual accounts better, because they transition. And what we found, even while we've been working on this, things that were vacant lots now have houses on them, and now have uses, and they have meters. And so there's a transition here going on continuously between lots and plats that have been approved and not yet built, and what happens each year. Each year, they seem to be a transition. So we've been able to track, right now, looking at the data, we've got about 6,079 vacant lots or virtual accounts. That's a lot. That's in addition to the 24,000 we have. We've got 6,079 where people could come in at any time and say, I'm ready to build, hook me up. And I know in the past, the council worried about vacant lots, making sure that they had a water supply in case somebody did come in. And so this is a tool that helps you keep a lot closer eye on where those vacancies are, what they might happen to them. So we're looking at approved subdivision tracks and lots. That's a really important one. We've clearly made a commitment through the real estate department that those people would have water. We have pre-1998 approved preliminary plats. It's a term that came out of the Assured Water Supply. And then we have these vacant CVID potential accounts, where we made a commitment to them, but maybe they'll hook up and maybe they won't. I mean, when we looked at the CVID, there's a lot of people already live up there, and they're not asking for water. There's also a lot of vacant land up there that could subdivide, so it could go either way. But we got 6,079 virtual accounts. We can take that to the next step and look at, here's an example of the Dells at Prescott Lake, tracking the virtual accounts. This is a subdivision that came in under that pre-1998 preliminary plat approval. At the time, it had 167 units that DWR recognized. When that plat was finally plotted, it had 107 parcels instead of 167. So there was a transition between preliminary plat to final. We looked now quickly through the model, and the model tells us that we have 92 existing customer accounts in this subdivision. So it's building, but it's not completely built out. And those are showed in red on that map. And then you look at the green dots, those are the virtual accounts, those are the ones that haven't been built yet. So you've got a really quick, dirty look of, here's where we are on the Dell subdivision. Here's where the status is. Started at 167, went to 107, 92 are built, 10 are left. Five of them turned out to be lots that are unbuildable, they're not associated with homes. So it's a way to keep track, especially for our Assured Water Supply accounting, where it's important to keep track of these commitments of what our status is. So then, the next part of really long-range planning is what might be out there beyond our current commitments? What could be demands in the city in the future that we really don't have that good of a feel for? It's either in annexation areas, which are fairly new annexation areas, so we don't have good plats or even good maps, or it's areas that are just zoned, so we don't really know that much about it. Or in the case of what we call that planning area number two, we really don't know hardly anything about it, but it's a potential demand out there in the future. So the kinds of things we're looking at for future accounts, which are different than these vacant lot accounts, because there's no lot there yet. It's non-plotted areas where commitments were made, like in Deepwell Ranch. Non-plotted areas where no commitment, but within the city limits. So the city annexed inland, but they never made a commitment that they'd serve them water. Non-plotted areas where no commitment, but within the general plan land use map. That was what I showed you building up. Important, how do you keep track of these estimates? Because if you're trying to look at what your ultimate need, it's a shot in the dark of how big are you going to be? So you have to use some scientific approach or regimen to it. What we've done is we've tracked these future areas, either based on a master plan where it was available. So as master plans come in, it gives you a much better feel for how the land might develop. It may never get plotted that way, but it gives you a really good feel from the master plan of what might be out there. If you don't have a master plan, then we, if we have zoning in the city limits, then we looked at, well, what's the zoning density? Based on the zoning density, we loaded up, well, the future demand would be based on zoning density. And then finally, where you're outside the city limits, all you maybe have is the general plan land use map. And if that's all that's known, then that's what you use. And it shows the kind of land use that's associated. Some of it says light industrial, some of it says recreational, and you know that that area not going to be built. Some of it says agriculture, so it gives you a little bit of a guidance, but it helps you get to the point where you can make some kind of an estimate of what the future might be. So let's just look at some of this. This is in the planning area one, so this is the city limits approach plus the areas outside. And here we focused that the future accounts would be only within the city. So we didn't project any future accounts outside in the county undeveloped areas, but just in the city. And these are areas that either are master planned or zoned. And there's 4,674. We went the next step, though, of looking at that bigger area, which really has a whole lot of unknown, but based on the land use, the projections, densities, we could come up with an estimate of 15,700 future accounts. So that kind of gives you a range of what the future might be. And the future might be, you know, an additional 5,000 accounts or an additional 16,000 accounts. But there's a huge gap in there in terms of, that's all land that hasn't been annexed into the city. So modeling the water demand, this is kind of the nuts and bolts of what the long-range planning is, is how do you project? So what we did was, we looked at both, recognized that there's both a potable demand and non-potable demand. We serve golf courses, sand and gravel operations. They don't get groundwater directly through the potable system, they get separate pipeline, or they get supplemented with effluent water. Our focus in the modeling, though, was on the potable demand. The demand for culinary use or industrial use, something that comes through the city's regular system. We looked at the infill in existing subdivision tracks, the new housing and commercial subdivisions and developments, and those future developments within the general plan area. So we really focused on those kinds of potable increases of demand. The basic formula that we looked at was, well, how do you know what growth is? Well, we looked at, can you project a demand for the ultimate build-out? That all those dots filled in? And you compare that with where we're starting. And if you subtract where you're starting from where you're ending, you know what your growth is. It's kind of a simple-minded approach, but it's really how things work, is if you know the ultimate build-up. So with that in mind, we started to focus in, well, what's the starting point? Where are you starting? Because any one year is like a snapshot in time. And snapshots don't always really reflect what's going on, especially in a city where you have transitory people coming in and out of houses, you have new houses being built, you have people buying and selling their property, you've got new things come in, you've got businesses shut down. So what we wanted to do is develop something that took away those variables, including precipitation variability, and created kind of a normalized starting point. So it's a normal situation where, what if everybody who has an account with the city actually was using water? And take away those variabilities. Then we established individual account averages if they had a minimum of 60 months or five years' worth of water use. So if we did, we think, you know, we got a pretty good track record on these houses, 19,000 of them, of how much water they use. But then we're always getting new ones come in, or we have ones that don't have 60 months. So we have to develop an average for those. What we did here that was a little bit unique was we looked at if those vacant houses are in a subdivision, and those subdivisions have a record, they've got most of the houses built, rather than say that those houses would come in as kind of a city-wide average, they're going to look more like the houses in that subdivision. So we tracked the average water use in that subdivision per house, and we attached to that, that average per subdivision to those vacant lots in that subdivision. So when we showed you before the Dells at Prescott Lakes, we had a lot of data there on the Dells, on existing customers. And so when we project, well, what would those green dots use when they come in? We thought they would use similar to their neighbors. And so that was kind of a refinement approach, but I think a pretty good one to give you a feel for neighborhoods differ, subdivisions differ, and that people in the north side of the city and people in the south side of the city may have different water use patterns, especially if you live in the trees or something like that. So we looked at some normalization attempts, and here's just the graphs that we have from 2011 to 2018. You know, it's varied, it kind of reinforces what Leslie was saying before, the trends are pretty flat in terms of total water use between 2011, 2018. A little bit up, but hardly noticeable. You would go from 6,100 to 6,400, something like that. But that incorporates all those variabilities in precipitation and housing and everything. So when you normalize, what we did was, we applied those techniques I just talked to you about, and we come up with a starting point of about 6,700 acre-feet. So it's just maybe a couple hundred acre-feet in the 2018 pumping number. So that would fill in all the vacancies, all the new customers, things like that, 6,700 acre-feet, that's our starting point. Then we look at, okay, what happens when you get to that ultimate build-out we talked about? When you imply those, the vacant, the existing customers, the vacant customers, the future customers? End up with 34,900 accounts in Planning Area One, 46,000 accounts in Planning Area Number Two. You can see that's a lot of potential accounts fills in. It may be more than that, it may be less than that. We know that things change when development comes in. They either come in less dense, or they come in more dense, but they almost never come in where you think they're going to come in. So here are the answers. So when we get to the build-out for those, we estimated that on top of that 6,700 we just talked about, that when you add it together for 34,000 accounts, the demand is going to be about 9,400 for the city limits approach, Planning Area One. But it could be as high as 12,700 acre-feet for that larger-scale demand zone for the general plan area. So that's about double, 190% of the current demand. The 9,400 is...
Excuse me, Herb?
Yes?
And this is assuming that everybody in the build-out area is using water?
Exactly. So this is worst case.
Okay.
This is worst case. So this is like if you're planning for the ultimate, which is, what's the worst I have to plan for? Or what's the most I have to plan for? That's kind of what you're looking for here. And here's the difference between the two. That's the formula I said. It's buildup minus starting point equals growth. Growth is 2,600 to 6,600. Growth is 2,600 to 6,000 acre feet. So that's the additional demand we can expect on top of the 6,700, based on the projections we put in place and reasonable water use demand numbers. So then the question is, you know where you're starting, you know where you're ending, how long does it take you to get there? That's, who knows? But here's an approach. What we did in the model was, we looked at a 20-year projection, a 50-year projection, and then the ultimate build-out. And the reason why we did 20 years is that's what DWR requires when you look at assured water supply. You want a 20-year projection. 50 years, we looked at because that's a really common approach towards planning, planning out 50 years, crystal balling. A lot of places don't ever try to estimate build-out, because they just think they're going to expand forever. They're not bounded, or they're not, they don't put any bounds upon themselves. So they don't always look at build-out. But here, we're looking at build-out. Here, the next chart, I looked at, based on those construction dates, how did growth occur within the city service area? And it's varied quite a bit over decades. So these are accounts added per year by decade. And if you look at, starting point in the 50s was about 100 per year. It peaked in the 2000s at over 500 accounts per year. And 1990s were, so almost 20 years in a row, we were over 500 accounts per year. And you add 500 accounts per year, you can get to your build-out pretty quickly. The 2010s reflect the recession. It's dropped down, but it could really easily bounce back, you know, to where, so-- So the bar in the middle is, well, what's the average? And the average over that long, long range was 339 units per year, which is above what we're adding now, but it's, when you look at those two decades in a row, over 500 accounts per year, 300 is actually fairly conservative. I looked at, well, how long does it take you to get to build-out based on how many accounts we have to fill up? And here's just the chart that takes, shows you. On the right is number of years. So if you're looking at 500 accounts per year, far right side, you can get to build-out in 20 years. So your planning horizon to get to build-out for Planning Unit One is not that long range if we had that kind of rapid growth. When you look at just the average of 339, Planning Area One, based on the vacant accounts, it's 34 years. Planning Area Number Two at 339, 64 years. Now, you can vary that 339 just down to 200, and you're into 100 years, that kind of stuff too. So, but it gives you a really good perspective of what's my planning horizon? Am I looking at something that's generational? Or am I looking at something that, in my lifetime, we could get there? And it all depends here on this rate of growth. And how that rate of growth happens, it has nothing to do with what you want. It has to do with market economies, general trends in the country, real estate prices, things like that. So this gives you the ability to plan a lot of what-ifs. What if it goes fast? What if it goes slow? Ultimately, when you're looking at water resources and how big is your bucket, it doesn't matter that much how fast you get there. It's, are you going to have enough when you get there? How fast you get there helps you a lot with things like infrastructure, well drilling, things like that. How you can space out the ability to get that stuff. Well, what we looked at for the model, because you don't really know in the future areas who's going to develop first, who's going to develop second, we just looked at categories of development. And we looked at, of course, the existing people are here. But then the growth, we're going to say that if you have a plat, a lot, it's a whole lot more likely you're going to develop a lot that's in a plat in the subdivision than you are in some unknown area on state land. So they're probably going to happen as a category first. And then if you have a preliminary plat, at least you're farther along than somebody who doesn't know what they're doing. So anybody who's in a preliminary plat is probably going to develop next, the third category. Then we have two categories where you really don't know what's going to happen, but you have a pretty good idea if you're on private property, there's a better chance you're going to develop than if you're on state land. And here's just a graph that shows in the orange, that there's a lot of state land interspersed with the private land, especially in that general plan area. And the history of state land is that, one, it's subject to its own development procedures by state law, and historically, state-owned lands are slower to develop than privately-owned land. And quite frankly, they may never develop. So when we say the worst case, the ultimate, if everything builds, you know, that would take a lot for all that state land to develop. But you can always cut it back in your planning, saying, well, what if we, what if we plan for half the state land, things like that? That's what the model that you do is, is to scale back the things that you don't think are worst case. And clearly, state land, at least within my experience, it's just a cumbersome, cumbersome process to get state land to develop, and it tends in the end to be political. And so you never know what's going to happen.
So are you saying that if, in fact, all the state land developed within our general plan area, which it probably won't, but if all of it did, that we would still only be using about 12,000 acre feet per year?
That's correct.
And we're authorized legally to use 16,000 some odd acre feet per year?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So here's, I know this is hard to see, and I don't want to dwell on it because it's hard to see. I just wanted to show you that, how you look at unknowns when you build these kind of models. You look at variables, what I call what-if adjustments. And for each of those categories of use, where you don't really have good data, and you're, so you're making an estimate, you have the ability here to use the citywide average, or you could plug in another number. So you could say, well, what if our conservation measures get better than the current average? And plug that number in. And you can plug that in for all three levels of demand, current, vacant, and future. And it gives you the ability that to really get a sensitivity to how conservation works. Or on the other hand, what if people started, what if we've been through a cycle where all these water numbers are low, and people start using more as the houses age? Because that's possible too. As things age, things don't get replaced as often. We wanted to also focus a little bit on multifamily, where we just don't know that much about multifamily. Multifamily development is an important part of almost every community. And it develops a little bit sporadically. It's, happens when market conditions are right. And we wanted to focus a little bit on multifamily use per unit. And what we noticed here in the data, if you look kind of--
I have a question.
Yes?
Yeah. And multifamily from one jurisdiction to another can be somewhat different. For example, what grows in the city of Prescott may not parallel what grows in the town of Prescott Valley.
But here, it's just the city of Prescott?
And I understand that. But when we're talking about multifamily, it's very difficult not to take into consideration the demographic of the city of Prescott, not the demographic of someplace else when you talk about multifamily.
And that's what we did. You know, it's--
Thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah. Well, what we, what we noticed is that there's not that much land zone for multifamily, vacant land zone for multifamily. But with the master plan on Deepwell Ranch, there's a lot of multifamily built in there. So how it disperses, we're not sure. But I tend to think that that's something we want to take a closer look at, because multifamily adds a household, and according to the data we've got, it adds a household that's quite a bit less water per use. So there's two numbers together in the middle, future account, single-family use, future multifamily use. You can see it's .17, .10. So what our data was showing us, that in a multifamily setting, we're only using 1/10 of an acre foot per acre per unit, and on a single family, .17. Both are really good numbers. But when you have a multifamily setting, either mobile home park or condo units, there's not that much outside use. And so you tend to have that. I also wanted to point out, though, that what we look at here is the rate of growth, and that calculates in the middle, calculates the number of years. And then I put in a factor for occupancy rate. And that gets to this point of, what if you really don't want to plan for worst case? Everybody knows there's vacancies. There's always vacancies. And so when you plan for no vacancies, you know, as an engineer, I'd call that the factor of safety. But it's a conservative approach, that generally, every year, you're going to have 5% to 10% vacancies in your housing stock. And so you really don't have that kind of water demand for vacant houses. The last thing that we put in there is looking at the supply side, is Big Chino. Do you want to use it? Yes or no? And if it's yes, when do you want to start to use it? So we put in variables to, you can turn on Big Chino, turn it off. If you turn it on, when would you start it? So that gives you another feel. So here's some example runs.
Before you go--
Yes?
Can you go back to that other chart, the one right before this? And when you talk about the, the graph, which you talked about, the recharge and the loss amount, or the amount returned to the plant at 55%?
Yes, yes.
What do you attribute that to? Are you talking about outdoor watering? Are you talking about loss during, you know, through the system?
Okay. So that's a really, really important number I glossed over there. So what we have in Prescott is, part of our supply is derived from our use. So our effluent supply is derived from people who use water and return it to the sewer. And so what's that ratio of how much we deliver to how much shows up in the sewer? Our current estimate's 55, but it could go as high with less outdoor water use landscape, smaller lots. That number might evolve up to 65 or 70%, where most of the water that gets used for domestic purposes shows back up in the sewer for reuse a second time. So that return flow rate is a critical component when we look, not as demand, but as supply. What's available supply going to be derived from the effluent?
When you start talking about the open land, we're talking about the new construction, you're looking at those systems being upgraded to where they possibly could get 65 to 70 back.
So much depends on, not on the system, but on the use. So if you don't have much outdoor use, so almost all your use is interior for showers, watering, culinary use, whatever you don't consume, and you don't, people don't consume a lot of water, a couple gallons a day, ends up in the sewer. But if you water your lawn and your shrubs, a lot of it doesn't show up in the sewer.
What do you suppose, being an older community, maybe Craig can answer the question. We've replaced a lot of sewer lines, however, we have a lot of old sewer lines out there. What do you suppose the loss of those are in our creek beds and stuff? Do you have an idea?
I don't have that idea. I don't know. It'd be an interesting factor. I don't know what the answer is.
Thank you.
Yeah. But the amount returned to the sewer is important. What we'll talk about in a few minutes, though, is that a lot of the growth, even if it returns to the sewer, is going to be on Prop 400. And so it does, it gets segregated from being part of the future supply. So that's, we've labeled the Prop 400 lands in that future demand, so we can segregate out not just what's returned against use, but what's returned that's usable as a water supply. So now I'll go on here and say, we use the 339 accounts per year for Planning Unit One. That comes out to be 34 years to build up. And when you include the green line, the green line is your non-potable water. So that's the water that goes to golf courses, sand and gravel operations, anything else that's in a separate system. The total demand is going to build up from about 8,500 or 8,400 now, because we use about 1,500 non-potable. And it's going to build up to what we said, about 11,500 acre feet over time. And out of that, you can see the blue is the single-family component of it, builds up over time. The gold color is multifamily, non-residential is a big component. And then when you look at these kind of water budgets, you have to look at your loss in your systems. And that kind of goes to the question of how much is leaking out of our pipes? And it's invisible water, so people forget about it because it's invisible, but it's part of your supply. You have to take it into account. Look at the same example for demand, when we use the bigger planning area. We take the build-out, it's now 64 years to build out at 339. The demand is up there about 15,000 acre feet. These are the same numbers I showed you before for build-out, but these include the non-potable demands as well. Now look at the supply. The supply, especially on assured water supply, this is the other half of the equation. We have a groundwater allowance in the assured water supply of 9,300 acre feet, can go up to 10,000 acre feet. We have a surface water supply from Granite Creek and Willow Creek, dependent upon yearly runoff. As mentioned earlier, it's probably dependent on surface water rights too. I didn't think about that. We have a reclaimed supply. It's dependent upon what portion of the customer base is connected to the sewer system. And here, we've got quite a bit of things we've mapped, of people who are, came in and are not hooked up to the sewer, they're on septic. We've also got the Chino Valley folks who are not hooked up to our sewer. They're hooked up to the, either septic or Chino, Town of Chino Valley sewer. So that's something we had to segregate out. We were dependent upon their flow rates to the sewer that we just talked about, dependent upon this mount that's subject to Prop 400. And to a very small extent, but important, the Yavapai tribe in their settlement agreement claimed the right to reclaim their own effluent if they wanted to. In our water portfolio, we have long-term storage credits, where we've had extra water that we put into the ground that we didn't need, and we build a bank account, and we'll continue to build that bank account. We were given recognition of 94 acre feet per year equivalent of groundwater extinguishment credits, something specific to the assured supply rules. And then the Big Chino is, of course, conditioned on actually building the project. The number in the assured water supply decision was about 4,470, not counting the Prescott Valley part. It might, Leslie tells me, it might be just a little bit less than that now. Surface water was an important piece of it, because the city invested heavily in buying the Chino Valley Irrigation District water rights. This just shows you that it's a variable supply. It turns out to be a fairly highly variable supply. Some years, there's none, some years, there's an abundance. You just can't count on it. But on average, it's a pretty good supply. What's unique about the surface water rights in Arizona state law is they're use it or lose it. So we can take that water and recharge it, but we can't carry it over to the next year. So it always makes sense that on a paper accounting standpoint, whatever we recharge that year, we count, because you can't carry it over to the next year. It's only one year at a time. When we look at the general supply reliability, not just the surface water, we know groundwater is really reliable. It's almost drought-proof, but it is subject to long-term physical availability. If you've got a rate of decline in your aquifer, you've got to monitor that rate of decline, see what's happening. Our demonstration was, we had more than 100 years' worth of supply to meet our demands. It's important to keep an eye on that, though. It's not just take a look at it and forget about it. The physical supply is the most important thing. Paper supplies don't mean anything. You've got to have wet water to serve customers. As I mentioned, surface water is highly variable, use it or lose it. The reclaimed water is highly reliable. People flush their toilets and use the showers at a very reliable rate, so you can count on it. But the supply is dependent on just the non-Prop 400 accounts. So we have to try to keep by the, of the Prop 400 people, that water goes back to recharge, but it goes to recharge for replenishment of the aquifer and not part of the water portfolio. Extinguishment credits are just another form of groundwater, so they're reliable. Big Chino is very reliable, but it requires this pipeline be built. So here's the bottom line we looked at, supply and demand. So here is the available supplies, oh, just the supplies. I didn't get to the bottom line yet, sorry. Got ahead of myself. Here's the supplies based on a 20-year Big Chino over time. We talked about the 16,000 acre feet being allowed, up to 20,000, 21,000 on this chart, using an average of 13,000. You know, so there's plenty of supplies available, especially if you use the Big Chino for Planning Area One. Area One. For Planning Area Two, it looks a little different. We actually dig into that black area is the portion of the effluent that's generated that we don't use. We didn't need it. So, it's excess. So, you can kind of see that the, at the top of the green line, it matches the actual demand. And then, I want to show this ultimate, the comparison of supplies versus demands on these two studies. You put all the pieces together. The blue lines are the demands, including the reclaimed water demand. The red line is the available surface, or supplies in the portfolio that are available to us. And you can see without Big Chino, there's a nice cushion already within Planning Area Number One. With Big Chino, in 20 years, the cushion goes up compared to a current projected demands of what I mentioned before, based on how we geographically estimated demand. Let's take a look at Planning Area Two, which is obviously much larger, much bigger demand. Without Big Chino, out towards the build-out, there's still a cushion, it's just a small cushion. So, you are subject to, if you ever got to that level of demand, the supplies become closer, but they're still more than you need. With Big Chino, a very big cushion to get to that planning area. So, these are just examples. As I showed you on that big chart, you change all these variables, you get different answers. And getting different answers really gives you knowledge, I think, when you look at, it's not just one way to look at things. It's how do you project the future, different ways of looking at the future, and you get different perspectives. And you get different perspectives on both the supply and the demand, how Prop 400 affects the supply. All that stuff comes into play by running various scenarios, and that's what this model's about. When we looked at, well, what do we need to do to help even make this better? One is, we want to focus more on multifamily. We want to know where does that play in? I don't personally feel like I've adequately addressed multifamily in the model right now. Evaluate if commercial and other demands are being adequately addressed. One of the interesting parts was when we looked at these non-residential uses, some of the largest uses were for personal irrigation. You had a separate meter for irrigation, and the city kind of clamped down on that. There's not going to be more accounts for. So, the future, that number might be high, at 1.07, because if you don't have those kinds of uses allowed anymore, then that wouldn't be in the mix. But they dominated, some of your highest use accounts were for outdoor irrigation. Establish an annual update procedure to keep the model current, and especially as soon as you get a development plan come in, take a look at how that development plan helps refine your model. And then, most important in my mind is you start looking at what-if scenarios, you know, what if we do better on conservation? What if we do worse on conservation? What if densities increase beyond what we think? So, that's kind of what the whole model idea was about. I think it's a fairly useful tool for any community. This one is particular to Prescott. It's built for Prescott, around Prescott. Wouldn't work anywhere else. You just don't have those same kinds of conditions. But for what you need and what you look, I think this is the way to envision for you to put, it's not a plan. I don't want to say this model is a plan. It's not a plan. A plan is what you develop using the information. This is a tool to give you information to develop a plan. So, that's kind of what it's about. So, with that, I know I talked a lot, but we've done quite a bit of work for you, so...
Herb, this is great information. Thank you for all your work. I know it's a long time coming. We like to make data-driven decisions, and this is great data for us to analyze, then to make decisions in the future. The other thing that occurs to me is just the great work that has happened before us, and I've said it before, and I'll say it again, previous councils with the CVID, with our recharge facilities. We have some tremendous facilities in place that really allow us to have this kind of great picture. And so, the conservation efforts as well, with Leslie and others that have worked so hard, you can again see the benefit of those conservation efforts in these models. So, a lot of people to thank, but for sure, my two elder statesmen, can I say that? For previous decisions by these councils really has put us in a great spot. And again, thanks for all your work. Great, great data that will allow us to make some really good decisions, data-driven decisions in the future. Questions, comments from the council? Councilman, good.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at both Mr. Dishlip's tool and the report that we got from Leslie, it's pretty clear to me that we've done a pretty commendable job in particularly making our usage of our water supplies, particularly in the single-family area, quite impressive. It just shows you that tiered water rates, conservation measures, public awareness of those things have resulted in reduction in usage per capita. I think the commercial community has responded with more efficient fixtures and things that are now common, so common, in fact, you can't even buy inefficient fixtures. So, some of your data that we're projecting is based upon the performance in those areas. We haven't seen much change in multifamily, and we haven't built much multifamily, but we are getting more multifamily coming online. And I think some of the discussions about bringing in metering to multifamily will generate, I think, similar efficiencies, if we can find a way to do that and get the market and developers and builders to see how valuable that can be. And then, for the renters and leases, for them to be able to see when they conserve, it does help their pocketbook. I see the non-residential as being kind of a gap, because I see your projections of growth in that area, but we really haven't even brainstormed on how we might have some impact in that area in the future. But clearly, if we continue to be diligent, we continue to create public awareness of how important efficient use of our water demand is, we're going to have a pretty reliable future of available water, so that we don't have to spend hundreds of millions of dollars trying to access the Big Chino. And that just requires a lot of consistency on our local government's part, because as we continue to bring in new people from different parts of the country who have a history of using water in a different way, if they can get used to the fact that in our community, efficient, conservative use of water is for everyone's best efforts, then I think we can, we can be pretty comfortable with where we're going in the future. So, Mr. Dishlip, thank you very much for this tool. I'm sure we'll be using it when we talk about what-ifs and future decisions, and it's pretty encouraging. Thank you.
Just to your point on non-residential, the area around the airport, when I started plotting out a concentrated area of new non-residential around the airport is an example of how things may be different in the future, or different looks as growth and development occur than having it just dispersed all over. It's concentrated in a certain area right around the airport.
And with that, by the way, if we can come up with some valuable policies, being able to implement those in a concentrated area, we should be able to determine whether they're being effective or not. Thank you.
Councilman Blair.
Yeah, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, the past work that's been done by staff, whether you're sitting on council or not, the council's made some good decisions, but we couldn't have done it without staff and people leading us down that path, so to speak. And with our combining of our sewer department or our sewer facilities into one centralized location, it's a huge thing. And some of the other things that we've talked about, one area I hope we get to in the future, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Dishlip, is the fact that we have a lot of commercial users, I'll call them commercial users, which would be the VA Center and Prescott Unified School District, Yavapai College, and we need to do a better job as a city, requiring those facilities to check their irrigation systems, update them, put the proper, you know, moisture meters on them. There's new upscale things that we can do by cutting those types of things way back to see a huge difference in our demand.
I think if you sort through the data and look at who are your high users, you know, I think you probably hit on the head, who some of your high users were.
Mayor Protam.
Yes, thank you, Herb. Very nice presentation. Nice to meet you. I've seen you present before, so thank you. You had the one picture of the neighborhood in Prescott Lakes.
Yes.
And where you had the future and what's existing now. Are we able to do that in every neighborhood?
Yes.
With the GIS system, so you can look at each neighborhood and see what's out there and what will be developed?
Yes.
It's really impressive. And I guess I would like to say it would be great if we can take this information out there a little more, and really, because like the mayor introduced in the beginning, there's a lot of people doubting that some of the things we're saying are true, because they've heard something different for a long time, and because of the situation in the rest of the state. So, I think if there's some way that we can really educate folks about where we are and continue the conservation efforts, but education's a big piece of what we need to do with this.
Mayor Protam, it's an excellent point, and we have done a good job of educating the public about situations and our water conservation efforts before, but we're going to ratchet that up and maybe concentrate a little bit more on some of the results of the models that Herb has done, and also Mr. Woodard, so people understand it a little better.
Would be good.
Councilman Lamerson.
Thank you very much. Again, Herb, thank you for being here. It's been a pleasure over the many, many years working with you.
Many years, yes.
And you know, you know Gary Woodard was here not too long ago and talked to us a little bit.
Right.
But it's very evident that this community has been very, very sensitive to water where we live. We have a number of our employees, a number of our contractors that are people from ADWR. And that itself demonstrates, whether it's Leslie, whether it's yourself, whether it's Jim Holt sitting in the back hiding. You know, we've had occasion to want to work with the state for better water management in the state of Arizona, and the city of Prescott's the pioneer of doing a lot. And one of the reasons why Mr. Woodard came up here good and told us emphatically that we have one of the best water management portfolios in the state of Arizona is because it's the truth.
It's interesting what you say about Prescott. Prescott is faced without central Arizona project water, so you have to work harder. I think a lot of the valley cities, Tucson, they have this big cushion of central Arizona project water. All in their lap, basically. It gave them a nice cushion to work with. They don't think about things as hard as you guys have had to think about things.
Other questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
Yes, Russ Pilcher. I've been a resident about five years. I'm not sure I'd make it in your study yet, but I've got a pretty good feel on the water I use. I assume everybody in this room has used water today, and it's really neat to see the city focus on this important resource. It's not a matter just of quality of life, it's a matter of life, water is. When you cross the Colorado River there at Lake, coming from Las Vegas, you can look out and see Lake Mead, and you can see the declining water supply. It's very visible and it's somewhat scary. What we don't see when we drive into the active management area is our groundwater table. We don't see that, but we all know it, too, is declining. We're using more water than what is going in, and so, we're all working very hard at trying to use what water we have very wisely, and I really appreciate that. Mr. Dishlip, you've commented several times that this is unique to Prescott. This model, it's a tool. Prescott, I think we've all recognized, has been doing a marvelous job at managing their water resources, and the trend line is good. It's getting better instead of worse. My question now is, we're not the only use, user of the water. We have other cities, other communities, other entities that are using this water, and I'm not sure they've got the sensitivity. I'm not sure they've got the drive. I'm not sure they've got the same motivation that this body has. So, my question is, are we really trying to work with Prescott Valley, being the next big user, and other entities, so that we can have a regional solution to this problem that faces all of us, and that is the best and wisest use of our water resources? Or are we just kind of going it alone and hope they go well? So, my question to you, Mr. Mayor and others, do you think we're doing enough to work with our other communities so that we're on a common footing and a common drive? That would be my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for taking on this subject. One of the things that jumped out at me in the presentation, I noticed that he said 3% of the counts were allocated to multifamily, and they use 34.2% of the water? Did I get that wrong?
Yes, 10% of the water.
10%. Thank you.
I don't, William Goslow, 720 East Willis, Prescott. Under what circumstances does SRP give us the right to start storing water in our aquifers? Oh, it would be the circumstances. I mean, I realize that if Phoenisha has more water than it can use, they'll probably let us keep our water. But just curious as to, under what circumstances, we get a phone call from Phoenix and they say, okay, you can start storing water. Thank you.
In regards to the commercial buildings, I was just at one of these conferences down in San Diego. San Diego State University has gone to all of their large buildings using their condensate lines from their air conditionings. Here, we have similar humidity, so you should be able to produce quite a bit of water from that. Just check and make sure that, you know, if it's running out into the sewer, that's probably okay, because it'll be reclaimed. If it's running out into the, into a ditch or a side thing, then that becomes some of that unreclaimable water. I have a great question. I've been doing what-if scenarios on Excel for a decade, going back to modeling the Bay I have a what-if scenario for you, and it's a paper from Dr. Ivanova, who's over here at Emory Riddle, along with Dr. Mitchell. They wrote basically, the title of the paper is Gulf of California Sea Surface Temperatures and the North American Monsoon Mechanistic Implications from Observations. Essentially, what it means is if the Northern Gulf of California warms up by plus or minus one degree relatively early, you have an Arizona monsoon. If it warms up a little late, you have a Nevada monsoon. And these guys are from the Desert Research Institute. They have, there's plenty of backup. The science is real, it exists. The question that we're running into right now, and why I was down in San Diego, is the Salt and Sea is drying up. Essentially, the Imperial Irrigation District has an allocation of 3.1 million acre-feet per year of Colorado River water that used to be used for irrigation, much of it is now being transferred to San Diego, conserve and transfer sort of situations. Simply put, that they're going to reduce flows into the Salt and Sea from 1.3 million acre-foot of irrigation runoff down to about 800,000 over the next 70 years or so. The water vapor formed there is what causes our monsoon. There is a chance, there is a what-if scenario, if that water is not, if that evaporation is not mitigated, that it can actually reduce our summer... not mitigated, that it can actually reduce our summer rain, rain amounts and runoff. We're currently writing a proposal to get funding for Dr. Ivanova, Dr. Mitchell, the Desert Research Institute, to look at this what-if scenario, because there are plans on how to save the Salt and Sea. And as the gentleman suggested, you need information to be able to do a plan correctly. We can mitigate the loss of freshwater evaporation with doing things like flooding Laguna Salada, another subsea-level sort of situation. I guess my question is, is have you planned for such a what-if?
Thank you.
No more.
All right. Well, thanks again, Herb and Leslie, appreciate the information, very helpful, and we will adjourn at this point. Thanks.